Welcome, everyone. Township of Old Bridge Zoning Board of Adjustment, March 6, 2025. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting, by prominently posting in the municipal complex, an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, and the agenda of this meeting, mailing such announcement to the home news and Tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the agenda on the municipal website. Vice Secretary Parchelli, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Andrews?
President.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here.
Housekeeping issues, I would ask everybody in the audience if you have one of these, which I'm sure everybody does, please mute it so it doesn't interfere with our testimony this evening. This meeting is being simultaneously televised on OBT Channel fifteen as well as YouTube Live. If you ever want to look back at the meeting, you can find it easily on YouTube Live after just a few days. Having said that, the microphones are directional for anybody testifying tonight. Please make sure there's a little red light or a green light on them. When it's green, it's good to go. When it's red, we can't hear anything. So just pull them close to you, but not necessarily into your face, but close. If anybody from the audience is going to be speaking, there's going to be a portable mic that's going to be handed to you by the television operator, Jake, over there. Thank you, Jake. With that, we're going to move to item number three on the agenda. It's for an adoption. This is for an adoption of amended zoning board of adjustment rules and regulations 2025. Section one, colon, two dash four, order of business to include salute to the flag, swearing in of professionals, and general public comments. Board, having heard that, someone move it for adoption?
Move it, Scogno.
Is there a second?
Second, Andrew.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Item four is minutes. We have two this evening, Board. Go first to the January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Hopefully, you've had a time to review it. Absent any concerns for additions or deletions, I would ask someone to move that for adoption.
Andrews, move it.
Is there a second?
Second, Scogno.
Vice Chair Chevalier got that, okay?
Okay, sir.
Oh, Ms. Chevalier got that?
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Board, the second one would be the minutes of February twenty, twenty twenty-five. Someone move that for adoption?
Chevalier, move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Andrews, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. We come to item five on the agenda. Before I call the resolutions this evening, I just, if you're here on a matter, there's, I have to inform you that on the agenda, forty dash twenty twenty-four Z, that's Matthew and Sarah Levine, the location, it's block one-two-zero-zero-zero-point-two-five, lot two-two. The physical location is thirty-five Lake Ridge Drive, Madawan address. It's a mailing address. C and D variance. Applicant proposes an addition of approximately one-hundred-and-ninety-one-point-two-five-square-feet to the first floor and approximately eight-hundred-seventy-six-point-nine-seven-square-feet to the second floor of an existing single-family home. This application has been withdrawn without prejudice. So that means that the application is not to be heard by the Board. If you're here on that matter, there's not going to be any further action by the Board because it has been withdrawn without prejudice. All right. Having said that, I'll move on for resolutions. Mr. Dusty, if you will, fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four Z, Rekal Bello, it was a C variance, sir.
Yeah, I don't have any witnesses.
I have them here. Should be right there, the first one.
The Bello application, Rekal Bello, was that? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Sorry. Asking for to, for a sideline setback approval of an existing shed, which was placed there by the shed company, three-foot minimum from the setback, and the shed company misplaced it. It's only fourteen feet, fourteen inches from their common side boundary. So she asked for a variance for whatever, I think, twenty-two inches. The shed's been there for two years, it's on a concrete slab, and the Board felt sufficient evidence was presented in terms of a hardship, and she was granted a variance under C two.
Thank you, Mr. Dusty. The Board members, you've heard the resolution. Someone like to move that for adoption?
Andrews, move it.
Is there a second?
Izzo?
Mr. Izzo, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-four Z, Eric Savvy was for C variance, the application was denied. Mr. Dusty.
Thank you. Mr. Savvy, the home is at fifty-one Shirley Boulevard, and the purpose of the application was to obtain approval to replace a pre-existing non-conforming existing deck, or deck which he had removed. He wanted to replace it in the same spot and continue with that nonconformity. The Board denied the application, thinking that he certainly had the opportunity and would still have the opportunity to move the deck so that it would not violate any of the setback requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Dusty. Board members, someone want to move that for adoption, please?
Chevalier, move it.
Andrews, second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomez?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-four Z, it's Derek Forton, who's a design waiver application denied. Mr. Dusty.
Thank you. The property is at one sixty-four Austin Avenue. Mr. Forton was asking for a design waiver approval. Two-family is allowed in this zone. He was going to fix up the basement for a two-family for his, I think, his aging parents. But the design waiver that he needed was for a dual driveway. The property is, I think it was one-hundred-and-ten feet, the variance, I'm sorry?
One-hundred-and-four.
Excuse me. One-hundred-and-four feet, the requirement would have been a minimum of two-hundred, and for the reasons set forth in the, in the resolution, the application was denied.
It's a good thing we have Ms. Chevalier here.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, Board members, you've heard the, the resolution. Someone move it for adoption, please.
Andrews, move it.
Is there a second?
Chevalier.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. This time, I'd ask Mr. Dusty to swear in our professional for the evening, Ms. Sawant.
Flying solo tonight, huh? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, so help you God? Thank you.
All right, we'll move forward with our applications. They will be taken in order. I did tell you that one is not going to be heard, the total of three this evening. First up, twenty-eight twenty-two Z, Interbell Automotive is amended. This is zone EDO one, economic development opportunity. Block two-zero-zero-one, lot twenty-five and twenty-six. Physical location, seventeen oh six Inglosstown Road, used car dealership license. It's requiring a D variance as a continuance. Wayne Lane Miller, excuse me, representing the applicant. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. My name's Lane Miller. I am here on Interbell. And as the Chair summarized, this is an application for a modification of a pre-existing D variance for a use as a car dealership. My client is actually in the business of disassembling and shipping overseas cars, as he testified at the last hearing, sends them internationally. He had gotten an approval for that use back in two thousand and seventeen. Business was good. He was a good neighbor, good operating business here in Old Bridge. I don't think there is or has been any complaints. His business is unchanged, but circumstances have changed how he has to affect that business. With the advent of COVID, and more importantly, the Ukraine war, how he can source his vehicles has changed dramatically. So what he does is he buys used cars or wrecked cars, takes them apart for parts, ships the parts overseas. Previously, prior to the Ukraine war, his primary customers, which were based in Russian Ukraine, had licenses that allowed him to acquire through their license the vehicles here. Given the advent of the Ukraine war, that has gone away, and I should really call it Russia's war with Ukraine. In any event, he came in front of this Board in two thousand and twenty-two, an application was approved in two thousand and twenty-three, allowing him to get a limited use for used car sales, so he could acquire a dealer license, which was necessary for him to buy the cars at auction, new source of his supply for the shipping overseas. Even though he was applying for a used car license, never a desire or intent to sell any cars on site, and he expressed that to the Board at the time. His understanding of the DMV regs and his discussions with DMV was this would allow him to get a used car dealership license. The Board granted it, put restrictions, because you didn't want car sales occurring on site, and restricted specifically that no car sales could occur on site. That was put in the resolution. It was put in a deed restriction. My client went, submitted down to DMV to get his car license. One of the things to get the used car dealership license is to get proof that the use is permitted by township, the township zoning. He got a letter from Damien Gill, said used car sales allowed, no sales on site, as per the resolution, which was an accurate description. He submitted that to DMV, and although they initially indicated that they would approve it, they came back, new examiner, said you can't do it under the statute and under the regulations. You have to be able to, one, show, have spaces where you can show two cars. You don't actually have to have them. You have to have two spaces that you can show cars, and more importantly, you have to be able to have sales on site.
Have to be able to what, sir?
Have sales on site. I went through an extended series of correspondences and emails with that investigator. I attached to the application some of those communications, basically laid out what my client was doing, why he needed it, didn't really sell cars, just needed it so he could buy from the, from the auto auction places. They didn't care. They said, this is the only thing under the regs that allows you to get a dealer license? Denied. So here we are, back in front of the Board, asking to allow the applicant to get a license that meets those minimum requirements, understanding he still doesn't intend to do anything other than what he's doing. I know the Board's concern is that this opens the door to a full-fledged auto dealership. That is not what's being sought. I think there was also, at the last meeting, some concern from some of the Board members that maybe we were trying to, in some way, mislead DMV and as to what was going to happen on the site. That is not the case. I laid everything out in my communications with DMV. We would expect that any approval that comes out would be limited, and those limitations would be set forth in the approval that we can send to DMV. What are we looking for from the Board? The ability to have two spots on site that would allow, would be available to show cars for sale. Again, no intention to sell. We would locate those spots on the property, anywhere the Board wanted. My client has no desire to have cars up front on the property showing them for sale or the like, it would be at the far rear of the property. You have to be able to have retail sales. We'd like to have a limitation that no more than one retail customer can be on the site at any time, things that are really inconsistent with a large or active car dealership, as we would picture it. In terms of signage, my client has a sign on the property, says Interbell Automotive. Would have no change to that signage. You wouldn't have the flags outside, you wouldn't have, you know, big sale, present day, weekend, any of that. The only signage he's requesting is the ability to continue Interbell Automotive as his signage. And again, we would expect those limitations to be in any resolution of approval. We would be more than happy to put all those limitations in a revised deed restriction. He wants to simply be able to buy the cars so he can continue to sell the parts, disassemble them, sell the parts overseas. I have my planner here, I have the applicant here. At the end of the last hearing, there was a little bit of an academic discussion between the attorney, who was present at the time for the Board, and our planner, as to whether this is a D two variance, which is an amending of a use which has a lower standard, or a D one. And I think my planner went a little bit off into the pedantic side of things and was arguing for a D two. We defer to the Board. We think we meet the requirements, either as a D one or D two, with the testimony that was presented before. We are not trying to create a opening that we can wedge ever wider. We are merely trying to get my client the ability to source the cars that he needs so he can disassemble them, sell the parts overseas. And as I said, I have the planner here, I have the applicant here. Any restrictions the Board wants to put into the resolution that allows my client to source the cars and get his dealer license, we're happy to have there. Again, he's not looking to have a car dealership as we know it. He merely needs a dealer license so he can acquire cars, take them apart, sell the parts overseas, doing essentially what he's been doing since two thousand and seventeen, but with a different source of supply because of the change that occurred in the operations. I don't know if the Board has any questions of me, the applicant, or our planner?
Mr. Miller, I'm certainly going to go for the legal advice to our counsel and the advice of Ms. Sawant in reference to whether it's a D one, D two. My impression was that you rested your case last time.
We put in the testimony, we had, yes, we did.
So if you've rested your case, I don't think the Board needs to hear anybody else. I'll ask, but, but, but let's get to the first matter, as to D one or D two, then we'll come back and see if the Board has any questions.
Okay. Without a question.
Is that okay with you, sir?
Absolutely.
All right. Ms. Sawant.
In my opinion, it's a D one, because a D two is only when it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. The use was granted a use variance. When a use is granted a use variance, and you come back for an amendment, it is not an expansion of a non-conform, pre-existing non-conforming use, because the use was granted by the Board. So I would still review it for the higher standards, and I believe a D one would be required.
Mr. Dusty?
Chairman, I agree. D one it is, yes.
And as I said, you're, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, we are not going to...
Just for the record, though, obviously, we're going to, we're going to have this as D one. Let me see if any of the Board members have any, have any questions, and then I'm going to ask them for any comments.
Okay, thank you.
Questions as to the D one or D two?
Yeah.
Okay, we understand it was, it was a D one use variance, and that's what, that's an amendment to that, not to a D two.
Understood.
Okay. Everybody on the side? All right. Anything you want to say finally, sir?
I think I gave my summary. As I said, if there are any questions that you need of the applicant or our professional, we have them here. Otherwise, I understand this is just Board discussion.
Any questions of the applicant or the attorney who will speak on behalf of?
None.
None?
None.
Go ahead, counsel.
Mr. Miller, we certainly accept your representations. Can we just?
Can we just have your, your client testify that he agrees with what you, everything you just said, didn't he?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, so that's in the record.
Yes.
Sir, would you, come on in, yeah.
Mr. Vazgryn, right? I believe you're previously sworn, so, so you're still under oath.
Why don't you give us your full name and spell of your last again, please?
My name is Dmitri Vazgryn. V-A-Z-G-R-Y-N.
Okay. And you heard the testimony just now, or not, excuse me, the representation just now from your attorney, Mr. Miller?
Of course.
And you agree with the statements that he made, that they are true and correct?
Of course.
And you abide by them?
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, having said that, now it's time for the Board's comments. Oh, I'm sorry.
Chairman, Chairman, maybe it's a question for Mr. Dusty, actually, and some, maybe, maybe the question and the answer helps the Board, too. I have been involved in this application since its inception, and the back and forth that went between the zoning officer and the applicant. Time and again, the applicant had said that the dealership license is a state requirement. It's a DMV requirement, not that he wants to operate a car, used car dealership. His business is what it is. It's, I know when, when it's a D three use variance, the Board has the ability to put in conditions. I know that's not a typical case when it is D one. However, and I missed the last meeting, but if the planner has presented his testimony as to a D one, is there something that the Board can put in conditions should they want to act favorably? And maybe the use variance is granted only for some time so that the Board gets the ability to see what comes out of it? Because it's a very different type of use. It's not something that we have approved in the past, or not something that we have seen in the past. But what I noticed, and in front of the zoning Board or after COVID, there have been many uses that were not contemplated before, like Phoenix salons. I'd never seen a shared salon space in the past, and it came out of COVID. It was a different idea. So is there something, like, should the Board act favorably? Are there any conditions the Board would want to impose? A food for thought?
Well, in terms of conditions, I think that Mr. Miller has indicated what the amended use application is for, and those would be the conditions. I think you asked me if you could put a time limit.
Correct.
And my belief is the use variances go with the land. They're not going to change. I don't think we can say it's only good for five years or only good for...
But I have seen certain, and I don't know, in the past, even before I came to Old Bridge as a planner, I have seen some resolutions that were passed where the Board had said, you have to act within two years of granting the variance, or three years, and if you don't act, then the use variance goes away. But you're an expert. I just wanted to...
Oh, I took it the other way. I thought you meant, could you limit the number of years that the use variance would expire, then? And I don't think you can do that.
Okay.
You, I think your question just now was, can we require the use variance to kick in?
Yes.
Well, I think it's already kicked in, so I don't think that's the issue.
Okay.
But certainly, I think you might be able to do that. I never heard of that one before. Usually, when an applicant gets approved, you get started.
No, so I had, I have seen, and it wasn't Old Bridge itself, but it was many, many moons ago, and I was looking at some of the resolutions, and I had seen, there was a stipulation that if it doesn't work, the applicant has to come back to the Board, and it expires. But the use variance expires, but it has to be specifically stated in the resolution, and that was my understanding.
I'm not familiar with use variances expiring. They run with the land.
Okay.
So, unless some of the conditions no longer are being met, then obviously it gets voided.
Because the Board has some fair concerns, and so were my concerns, that what if this, and especially along that area, we have noticed that, you know, the area is deteriorating because of the type of vehicles that have... because of the type of vehicles that have infiltrated into the area, and parking, maintenance of those sites have been an issue. So I understand the board's concern. It was just a food for thought.
Mr. Miller, I'll allow you a comment if you want.
Well, if it were possible, I mean, we would have no problem with coming back in five years to try to renew the variance if that was a condition that could be in place and the board was okay with that. I think the other limitations that would protect the board's concern, again, are specifying the variance, and again, with a deed restriction as to where the location of the two vehicles for sale would be on the property, anywhere the board wants. They're gonna be, as we planned it, it would be far in the back, far removed from everything. Not one of the, you know, usually car dealerships are right up on the curb. This will be far back, or it'll be right next to the building, whatever the planner and the board thought were most appropriate for their concerns. Restriction that there can only be one retail person on site. Restriction that the signage on the property can say only, Interbell Automotive. No holiday sales, no whatever.
The board, for the record, hasn't offered any-
I'm not-
-suggestion, see?
I, if I suggested that, it was misstatement.
That was a conference between the planner and the counsel. This board has not recommended anything.
Understood completely.
One of the questions, obviously, is going to be if the board would allow for the two spaces, where are they gonna go? Are you saying that you would leave that up to our planner to determine?
Yes, wherever the planner felt was appropriate.
Yeah, for Mr. Dasty, the building is pretty much almost up to the front. There would be nothing available in the front. It's a two-story facade, I would guess they would call it. So there's no glass, there's no anything. It would have to be, if it were, if it happened, it would have to be somewhere behind the building.
Yeah, and we have no problem behind the building, anywhere.
Yeah. I'm gonna make a comment, and then I'll open it up to the rest of the board, okay? Mr. Miller, I've been sitting on this board for a long time, and I was here for the original application. It was LNC Associates, I'm sorry, LNE Associates LLC. I don't know if Mr. Vazgryn was a principal in that or not, and it really has no merit, as far as I'm concerned. At that time, the facility was allowed to do what it does now, in part, dismantle cars. In 2017, Mr. Vazgryn, I guess representing the business, if he's the sole owner, came forward and looked for this modification. By 2022, this board had granted the use of a license with a deed restriction-
Mm-hmm.
-that's in place-
Yes.
-for no sales on the property. So when I saw this, when I first got this back in '23, or whenever it was, I said to myself when I read it online, why are you coming here? I don't understand. You've got what you want. I don't want, I don't think this board should be involved in circumventing regulations by DMV or otherwise. Quite frankly, I was in part opposed to this, going back to the 2022 modification. I voted in favor, but in 2017, I also voted in favor for the facility. I was reluctant on this dealer license only because I don't think that geopolitical issues should have any place in MLUL, and I don't think this board should decide that, based on that. It may have been a kind thing to do, but I don't think they should be intertwined. And I spoke to that, previous counsel was here for that matter. I still don't think that. The applicant himself went on the record, and he said his business wouldn't change one way or another if he didn't have it. It would be a little bit better financially, because I guess he pays some sort of a stipend for, to use someone else's license. I don't know what you'd call it, fee, whatever it may be. Once again, I don't think there's any undue hardship. This board shouldn't create or be led by business models as to whether they grant variances. If one man makes more than the other, that has nothing to do with municipal land use law nor the zoning board of adjustment. So I have, I really have a hard time with that. I find it hard to believe that someone who's been in this business and is in the auto business, whether you sell, buy, repair, dismantle, doesn't know what the law is about licenses. I didn't know, but I'm not in that business. He should have known when he came before. And it raises the question, was this a ruse? Or how did this all of a sudden come in three parts? I'm a little curious about that. However, I don't think that's gonna alter my mind in any, in any way. If he has the ability to get a license legally, why doesn't he go hang his shingles somewhere else and do that type of modification to his business to buy these things? This license has nothing to do with him dismantling cars. It has to do with how he can buy from auctions and how he can resell. So it really has, well, he resells in the sense of parts. It really has nothing to do with what happens there. So I'm, I don't understand the connection between the two, and I certainly don't stand in favor. He got a license from us. He's already been granted that. But it comes with a restriction. He can't sell on the property. That's a motor vehicle issue, not his only board of adjustment issue. And I don't think we, we should stick our noses in where it doesn't belong. I don't think we have the, I don't think we have the purview to do it, to tell you the truth. So as far as what I'll put on the record, I find no special reasons, because one of the specific reasons was no one would be on the site. Going back to LNE, no one would be on the site, employees only. So it's not a retail operation. And I know his isn't a retail operation either, but specifically, no one comes to the site. It's not particularly suited, as we just spoke. I just spoke to you about the building. It wouldn't look anything like a car dealer. And I don't, I don't believe in these, in this zone that that should happen. I think we went out on a limb when we granted it, albeit it's still in existence. How he handles that, I don't know. I don't think municipal land use law is advanced by purpose, or I think this does impair the intent and the purpose of the zone. I believe any hardships here are self-serving, so I cannot support the application. All right? Does anybody else on the board would like to comment? Now, we haven't taken a vote, obviously. It'll be your decision. We'll get to that.
Yeah, keep it short and sweet. The variance is filed with the land. This gentleman can sell the land, and then it's a full-blown auto sale lot. Sorry.
If anybody else wants to comment, they can. This is not a vote. None other? Okay. I guess that would close the comments. The decision would be, are you looking to take a vote?
Can I address some of those concerns?
You can, sir. Yours to prosecute.
Yeah, understood, but addressing first the chair's comments. In terms of it being a self-created hardship, it really resulted from the change in business operations because of the war, as I described. When he came in front of this board and got the variance that you gave previously, to assist him with his sourcing of the vehicles, because that's all he's looking at, how to buy the vehicles. The board, although reluctantly, was willing to give him that variance and allow him to try to get the license to source the vehicles. At the time, and this isn't part of the record already, but I guess I could testify because I personally did, if you want to swear me. I spoke to Damien Gill, who expressed shock because he said, this has always worked before. He's never heard of a thing like that. All you need is the ability to have the use variance, and you can get your license. He should be able to get it so he can buy from the auctions. DMV disagreed. There is no intent or desire to create any subterfuge with DMV. And I attached the DMV communications to the application to show that the applicant went in good faith, believing that this board had given him everything he needed. And it was only that DMV denied him that ability to acquire. In terms of being a full-blown dealership, as Ms. Chevalier was commenting, that's why we've commented on the restrictions. They're completely inconsistent with a full-blown dealership. Limited to two spots behind the building, limited signage, no more than one customer at a time possible. That's not a full-blown dealership. And in terms of trying to mislead DMV, as I said, I laid all this out when I spoke to them last time. They didn't care. I have no problem with laying it out again and saying, these are all the restrictions. We can only have one person. We can have only two spots available. Not saying there are ever gonna be cars there. Our signage is limited to the words Interbell Automotive. There's not any misleading. We're just trying to crawl over that bar, the minimum bar, to get the dealership license so that my client can buy the vehicles that he needs. The chair had mentioned that he has a workaround to use. As I mentioned in the last hearing, the problem there is that is a gray zone of dubious viability. Whether or not he's supposed to be relying on another person's license is open to question and could go away at any time. He's trying to have his business live and survive. He's made it this far. It's been tough while this application was pending, but he came back before the board because this is something that's crucial to his continued operations on the site. I volunteered, as I said before, we could come back in five years, whatever the board needs to give itself comfort. But he is asking for this change of the variance so he can source his cars and continue in business, operating exactly as he has. One of the reasons I suggested coming back in five years is you would see, if you approve this variance, he's gonna get his license. There will be absolutely no change that's perceptible to the residents of Old Bridge or this board. Five years from now, we come back, you would know and see that. So I don't know if that addresses the concerns that were raised sufficiently, but that is the applicant's position.
We thank you for your honesty. I have to go to the public and at least open a public portion this evening, as you well know.
Yes.
28 dish 2022 Z, Interbell Automotive. The matter is at 1706 Ingles Town Road. Does anyone want to be heard on this matter tonight that's sitting here? This will be the only opportunity to speak, if you're interested. Okay, I'll close the public portion. Back to you, Mr. Miller.
And I would even note in that regard, Mr. Chair, none of the residents around him are concerned. He's been a good resident of Old Bridge, would like to remain a good resident of Old Bridge, in hopes that this board will see fit to grant the variance with whatever restrictions they deem appropriate.
Bear in mind, whatever happens here, he still has the approval for the dealer's license. He doesn't have the right to sell cars on the property or buy cars.
Can I address that, Mr. Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
He has the use variance you gave him last time, which DMV has said is insufficient to obtain a dealer license. And I attach the regs that the investigator cited to me a number of times to the application. They have just flatly said, you can't get a dealer license because you're not allowed to have anybody on site. You don't have two spots that you can use to show cars for sale.
I wasn't referring to the, literally, the paper-
Okay.
-referring to the approval.
Okay, understood.
Anybody else looking to take a vote tonight, sir?
I guess we are going to ask for a vote, because unfortunately, although the board was quite kind last time, what it gave just doesn't achieve what he would need to do what he needs to do. So I don't know if that was well phrased, but you said we have the approval, but-
Those are your words, okay. I, the man is operating a business. This board hasn't declined him operating his business. How he operates his business is something totally different.
I understand. But my point was, the board gave him the last approval, hoping to assist him to operate the business the way he was looking to. Unfortunately, DMV has said, no, that doesn't do it, so.
Okay, so the board did offer, the board did grant-
Yes.
You're here to amend that, that application?
I'm not suggesting in any way that the board has done anything untoward. We appreciate everything the board's done. We are asking for a little more.
So this is amend it only. This is not, this is-
That's right.
Because we didn't grant a D2. Granted a D1, so it's a D1.
Yes.
All right, we're gonna take a poll of the board?
Okay, thank you.
All right, someone interested in either moving this for approval or against? This is Interbell Automotive. This is requiring an amendment of the D1 variance.
Testaverde, against.
Is there a second for against?
Chevalier.
Against?
Against.
Okay, board, that's moved in second. If you want to vote against, you vote by saying yes. If you want, you don't agree, you would say no. In this case, you would say yes to deny, no to not deny. All right, poll the board, please.
Yes. I'm sorry. Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes, in regards to motor vehicle is in control, so I vote yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes to deny.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
For all the aforementioned reasons that I put on the record, yeah, I would say yes to deny. It has been, the amendment has been denied.
Understood.
Thank you, Mr.
We thank the board for its time and consideration.
Thank Mr. Vazgryn for being here this evening.
Thank you. Do you need a minute? Or, no, you're done, right? Yeah, that's right. You don't have any, that's right. Good night. All right. We're not gonna go into a recess. It would just be a minute. We'll let the stenographer break down, and she probably wants to go home, so. Mr. McGowan, you using a stenographer tonight?
Excuse me?
You using a stenographer tonight?
No, no.
Okay. Well, Bob, let's go on the record first. We'll, let her-
Soft touch. Soft touch. There you go. You got green?
There you go. It takes an engineer to do that.
You're on red. Okay.
Good night. All right, this is matter 24 dish 2024 Z. Theater cut, Zone R5, medium high density, block 10, lot 300. Physical location is 300 Shoreland Circle, Lawrence Harbor, three-story residential home. Robert McGowan Esq. is representing the applicant who is requiring a C and D variance. And the reason I said that to you on the onset is you'll have, there's no written, there's not gonna be any written transcript of this. And by rule, the board asks for a stenographer, but you could refer, you can obviously waive that. And there's still the use of YouTube, and if you could get a copy from Channel 15, should you need the copy?
Well, the, this proceeding is being recorded correctly, so if I need it to-
It is, but if, you're not gonna get everything on the microphones. That's one of the problems, I think, so. But you're gonna waive that anyway, right, for the client?
I am waiving that. And the reason for that is it's, this is a single-family home on a lot in Lawrence Harbor. Hopefully, we'll be able to conclude our presentation this evening.
I was here within the last two years in both capacities, but a little bit of background, I have a bachelor's in science in civil engineering from Drexel University. I've been with the firm inside engineering for fifteen years, as of this January, which is a little bit of an accomplishment for me. A licensed professional engineer for eleven years and a planner for over nine, and both licenses are current and valid, and I've testified in both capacities throughout Monmouth, Middlesex, and Ocean Counties.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. And really, that's more important. We recognize you, but those that are watching at home who watch this proceeding sometimes, you know, who is that, who is that guy? What does he do?
That's not a problem, Mr. Chair.
So, it's kind of nice to inform them, okay, you're a professional engineer, and you're going to, you're going to speak to that.
Absolutely.
I'd only wishes there were more people here so that the advertisement could count.
I see, I see. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll walk the board through the property today, what it looks like, current improvements, and then we'll get into what we're proposing. So, we're at three hundred Shoreland Circle, block ten, lot three hundred. Property is two thousand two hundred sixty-eight square feet. We're in the R-five zone, which requires five thousand square foot lot. So, you could see we're undersized by about half. So, what the applicant's seeking to do is to construct a new single-family dwelling at the property while improving the off-street parking condition at the same time. And variance relief, which I'll get into, each point of variance relief requested is required for the improvements. So, Maureen, if you would be so kind to open up the first PDF on that list, this is the survey, and I'll just describe where we are. So, we're, this Shoreland Circle is a circle, which is an appropriate name, but we are just north of Route thirty-five. So, we're just north of a small retail strip that has frontage on Route thirty-five. So, what you could see on this survey, and it's a little busy because the property is so small, but on the lower side is a concrete walkway, and that's actually behind the building. Really, it's a service entrance for the retail strip and all the individual units. Today, there's a one-story framed dwelling. You can see on the survey, there's a rear patio, there's a shed that's just about on that rear property line, and the stone surface treatment of the backyard, starting at the side exit stair. There is no off-street parking or a driveway today. Right now, the property is completely fenced in. So, what the applicant is seeking is to remove all of the site improvements and propose a new structure. So, Maureen, if you could open up another PDF, please, and it, I don't know what it's labeled, it would be the last one, Plan BD, the Cott Residence. And this is from the architect, and I'll just kind of walk the board through what we're proposing, and there's reasons why, so I want to get into that. So, we're proposing a three-story dwelling, and I'll explain what that means and why. It's going to be centrally located on the property, which I'll show in a moment. It's important to note, though, we're calling it a three-story dwelling from a zoning standpoint, but it actually, this house will have two living floors. And how and why? The ground floor, and Maureen, if you can go to the next page, actually, maybe two pages from now, I want to see the front elevation, you can kind of see it best. We're proposing a garage at the front. That'll house one off-street parking space. At the back of the ground floor is a storage space, and then, of course, you see the front entry door. Why are we proposing a ground floor design? One, in this area, basements are not feasible, so the storage area that we're proposing on the ground floor will be used similar to any basement, but just at grade for household storage. Today, there is no off-street parking, so we're proposing a single garage and the driveway in front to provide the required and appropriately sized two off-street parking spaces, so that's an improvement. The first floor will have a living room, powder room, dining room, and kitchen. There's a ten-by-thirteen deck proposed off the kitchen. Uh, sure, yeah, Maureen, back to the first page, if you don't mind.
Find out the storage as well.
Yeah. So, this is the front of the dwelling. Here's your garage, and then here's the storage area, unfinished storage. First floor plan, living room, dining room, kitchen area, there's a single powder room there, and then there's a rear deck. And then on the second living floor, there's a master suite, hall bathroom, and two other modestly sized bedrooms, and then a ten-by-ten deck off the master bedroom. The home is proposed to be one thousand nine hundred fifty square feet, and it's three bedrooms, as I described, across the two living floors. The total physical height of the home meets the thirty-five-foot requirement. In fact, it's two feet, about two feet lower. The roof leaders for the home, and actually, Maureen, if you can go to our plot plan, which was on that list, and it's the, no, that's all right, I don't want to rush you. It's the second PDF down. Yep. So, the home is centrally located, and this allows us to collect the roof leaders where they're not collected today and discharge them where we propose. There was a note in Vena's review letter about where we should discharge the roof leaders. We're going to correct that slightly. We're going to pitch them towards the north, which is Shoreland Circle, all of them. So, we have that ability, and actually, what that does is reduce impacts from a drainage standpoint on the neighbors. Right now, the roof leaders discharge on the side of the house and go left and right. We're going to send everything to the street, so that's a slight improvement. Existing utilities are to remain and be utilized for the new home, since the property is developed now. So, that's the overall existing and proposed, and we have a list of variances that we'd like to discuss with the board and the justification for same. So, first and foremost, we have a D-four variance for floor area ratio. We require the D-four variance because we exceed the floor area ratio that's permitted for the R-five zone. The zone permits a floor area ratio of point four, where the application proposes a floor area ratio of point eight-six. So, looking at this site, it's a small site. It's half the lot area, it's half the lot width. It's twenty-five feet long, uh, twenty-five feet wide, excuse me, and ninety feet deep. For context, when you apply the floor area ratio of point four to this small lot, it would result in a compliant house size of nine hundred seven square feet, which is relatively small. The existing floor area ratio for the single-family dwelling, the single story, is eight hundred, is point three-five, or eight hundred nine square feet. So, when we look at the D-four variance for a floor area ratio, we have to look at how the site can accommodate a higher floor area ratio than what's permitted by ordinance. But as I'll, I hope to and intend to demonstrate to the board, since this lot is less than half of the required lot area and width for the zone, the other requested bulk variances that come with this application, in my opinion, would be required to some degree for even a floor area ratio compliant home, like we have today on the property. So, for context, I'll describe what's existing non-conforming with the home and the property today. So, our lot area is undersized, it's twenty-two eighty-eight square feet, or five thousand square feet required. In my opinion, that's a C-one hardship because there's no reasonable opportunity to cure. The lot width as well is a C-one. We have twenty-five feet wide, where fifty feet's required, and really, this width is the driver of the undersized lot because we're ninety feet deep. As I said, there's no reasonable opportunity to cure either of these undersized parameters, so they're hardship conditions. We are surrounded on all sides by developed properties with improvements that are pretty close to the property line. So, based, now we'll get into the setbacks. So, based on the required setbacks for this property, and Maureen, if you could pull up, I have a rendered exhibit on that list, and this will be a little bit clearer than the black and white for the board, yeah, rendering exhibit, the fourth one. This shows what we're proposing, kind of overlaid on an aerial, and there's a line on here. You could just scroll down a little bit just to show the house. So, there's a dashed line in the middle of the house there, two dashed lines, and that represents the required setbacks or what we call the required building envelope. And as you could see, our house exceeds that. But when we apply those required setbacks to a property like this of this size, a compliant building envelope would be seven feet wide and only about three hundred twenty-six square feet. It's about forty-six and a half feet in length. So, as you can tell, it's, it is limiting, so we could analyze all of these setback variances as C-one hardships, but because the lot size and the width limit the extent to which we can develop this property. But out of an abundance of caution, I think this will help support the D-four, we're going to analyze the variances as flexible C-two variances for this application. So, I'll go kind of step by step through the variances, and I want to try to describe to the board how we're, we are improving certain aspects of this application from existing.
Let me just interrupt and say, I think you said that the existing structure that's going to be removed is currently compliant?
It's not, and that's what I'm going to get into, yeah. So, first with the front yard setback. This zone requires twenty feet. Today, the house is six point nine feet from the right-of-way. We're proposing seventeen feet to a cantilevered overhang, which is really just to kind of give an architectural touch at the front of the home. The house, the front facade of the home is at twenty feet, so this is an improvement over what's, what's there today. The side yard setback is required to be nine feet on one side. Today, we have one point five feet to the left property line. We're proposing four feet, so we are improving that. We're actually proposing four feet on both sides to keep this centrally located. The house is seventeen feet wide. The combined side yard setback is required to be fifteen feet. Today, it's six feet, and then we're proposing a combined side yard of eight feet. So, again, we're improving that by a couple of feet. The rear yard setback is twenty-five feet required. Today, it's twenty-seven point three feet, and we're proposing thirteen point two feet. Maximum stories, the zone requires two and a half stories. We have one today, and we're proposing three. And again, I want to recall for the board that our ground floor is going to be used for parking and storage only, and we have the two living floors above.
Let's go back to the backyard setback for a minute.
Sure.
The reason that we're going to be closer to the back than the existing structure is because we're moving this house back. I'm sorry. We're talking about the rear yard setback, and the reason that we're proposing to move this structure closer to the rear yard is because the current structure is closer to the front yard, and there's no parking. By moving it back, we're now gaining outside parking space, and we're gaining an inside parking space in the garage. Is that correct?
Correct. So, it gets the house off the street, so it doesn't crowd the street as much. We get to provide our off-street parking, and by sliding that footprint back, we're pushing into the rear yard, but we get the benefit of, and in my opinion, the municipality gets the benefit of us providing the off-street parking, which is an improvement for the street.
And how, by moving the structure back, how will that affect the house behind us?
There is a commercial strip mall behind us, right, fronting on Route thirty-five. So, they're, luckily, you know, and again, that's one of the reasons why we're seeking that relief is because of, we don't have a sensitive receptor behind us.
So, our rear of the, of the proposed house would be to the rear of the commercial building in, on the other side?
Correct.
Okay.
The R-five zone has a standard for minimum landscaped area ratio. The requirement is point four-five. Today, it's point three-one, and we're proposing a point three-eight minimum landscaped area ratio. That is also an improvement, so we're providing a little more green space on site. We have decks in the rear, as I mentioned, so I'll go through the minimum required rear and side yards for both. So, generally, a deck would be, have a seven-foot setback requirement, but there is an enhanced setback based on the height. So, for the first floor deck, the technical setback requirement is twenty-one feet. We're proposing now to the rear staircase that you see on that plan, point four-five feet, but three point two feet to the deck limits, and then the side yard is four feet on each side, which lines up with the limits of the dwelling. The second floor deck, again, the general requirement is seven feet, but it's increased to forty-one feet based on its height. We're proposing three point two feet to the rear and four feet to the side. Note for the board, in one of the existing conditions, as I said earlier, there is an existing accessory shed on the property, which, based on its size of about one hundred and eighty square feet, the side yard setback of five point one feet and the rear yard setback of point four feet do not comply with what's required to be ten feet for both. So, this nonconformity is being eliminated and, in effect, being replaced with these decks, which obviously is a different type of structure, open without walls, as opposed to the shed. Again, I want to note for the board that we are improving the off-street parking condition where nothing exists today, providing two compliant off-street parking spaces, which is, which meets the requirement for this house. So, to pull this back and tie these bulk variances in with the D-four floor area ratio variance, I mentioned a compliant floor area ratio for this lot would be a nine hundred seven square foot home. The compliant setbacks for this property would require a footprint of seven feet wide and three hundred twenty-six area footprint. These limitations are troublesome when attempting to provide a new home that meets the needs of a modern, single-family living, which is adequate restrooms, internal living space, et cetera. When I get into the negative criteria, I'll explain that the design of this home is not unlike some of the other newer dwellings in the immediate vicinity, which we'll get to. Based on all this information, in my opinion, we could draw a couple of conclusions. A home that even meets the floor area ratio requirement would still require setback relief on the sides and the rear or the front, similar to what we're seeking today, similar also to what exists today. So, in my opinion, the proposed floor area ratio does not disrupt the intent and purpose of the zone plan when applied to this specific property. In my opinion, bulk relief will be required either way, whether it's compliant or not. We can also ask the question, well, what if our lot did meet the required width and area of the R-five zone? If you would apply this home to a compliant lot, it would actually comply with the floor area ratio if it was a five thousand square foot lot, and our landscape area ratio would also comply and be much improved. So, in effect, this home was designed by the architect to fit within the R-five. It was designed for an R-five lot, but the lot size conditions that we have result in the relief we're seeking today. This application furthers the following purposes of the MLUL. A, this is an appropriate use in development that promotes the general welfare, as the R-five permits single-family residential dwellings, and we're improving parking on our street by now providing adequate off-street spaces where nothing exists today. Purpose B, this application secures safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disasters. This is new construction to be built in accordance with the latest building codes, which is a safer condition than what exists today. Purpose I, this application promotes a desirable visual environment. We're proposing a new home, which we feel is an aesthetic improvement over the existing conditions.
We're also proposing to move that old back away from the street so that the residential street side of this has an improvement.
It opens up the streetscape, that's correct. And also, this, we feel this application will conserve property values in the neighborhood, which remains a purpose of land use regulation. So, in effect, new construction generally conserves, if not improves, property values in the immediate vicinity, and the term a rising tide lifts all boats would apply here. When we analyze the negative criteria, we must assess the impacts to our neighbors and the general public. So, the home by ordinance is three stories, but again, we are proposing that for a reason. We're improving the situation and eliminating parking impacts to the neighborhood by providing off-street parking where it doesn't exist today. And how are we doing this? We're setting the house back, and we're providing the garage and the ground floor. We can't provide for a conventional subgrade basement, so in lieu of that, we're proposing the rear half of the ground floor to be used for household storage, in effect, providing a basement at grade. And then one more, Maureen, there's a, the last PDF on my list is a, is a neighborhood exhibit, just kind of identifying where we are, where we sit in relation, that would be the third one down, aerial exhibit, yep. And what it'll do is place the property for the board. You can see our proximity to Route thirty-five. If you could just scroll down, and I'll explain those pictures in a moment. But we did look at the neighborhood, and not the entire neighborhood north of thirty-five here, just our, really, our, a couple of blocks here. We found four properties around us that are, have homes that are more than two stories, right? Some of which have ground floor garages. And Maureen, if you could just scroll up to those photographs, we have our, at the top of this, yeah, so we have our front elevation, and then we have the other four homes that we, we thought were important for the board to see. You could see that they're not dissimilar to what we're proposing, starting at the left, two fifty-six, Shoreland Circle there, it's a three-story home, the garage is actually, it's a corner lot, the garage is behind that, on the backside of that. Two fifty-eight Shoreland Circle, ground floor garage, three floors of living space. Two sixty-four Shoreland Circle, probably the most similar to what we're proposing, albeit a much wider home, ground floor garage, nice staircase up to the first living floor, and then a second living floor above, and then two seventy-five Lawrence Parkway, which has what appears to me to be maybe prior, previously a ground floor garage, but now there's a solid wall there, but ground floor entrance, and then two living floors at least above that ground floor. The point here is that, as this, the point here is that the proposal fits within the neighborhood trend of newer construction or improvements to existing homes. This is how we're able to provide an acceptable-sized home, an adequately-sized home, that meets the needs of modern residential living. We feel that this home fits within the current and future development what we're proposing. Starting at the left, 256, Shoreland Circle there, it's a three-story home. The garage is actually, it's a corner lot. The garage is behind that, on the backside of that. 258 Shoreland Circle, ground-floor garage, three floors of living space. 264 Shoreland Circle, probably the most similar to what we're proposing, albeit a much wider home, ground-floor garage, nice staircase up to the first living floor, and then a second living floor above. And then 275 Lawrence Parkway, which has what appears to me to be maybe prior, previously a ground-floor garage, but now there's a solid wall there, but ground-floor entrance, and then two floor, living floors at least above that ground floor. The point here is that, as this, the point here is that the proposal fits within the neighborhood trend of newer construction or improvements to existing homes. This is how we're able to provide an acceptable-sized home, an adequately-sized home, that meets the needs of modern residential living. We feel that this home fits within the current and future development pattern of the neighborhood. Again, I do want to point out that our total structure height is almost two feet below the maximum height of 35 feet. So while we do have the three stories here, we meet that physical height. We have three stories, but the, again, the off-street parking and providing that and having the ability to, for a location inside the home for household storage was, in the applicant's opinion, very important to provide, not only for the, when compared to the ordinance, but for the actual use of the home. In terms of setbacks, in my opinion, the impacts from the new proposed setbacks are not substantially increased when compared to the existing setback conditions. We're improving our side yard setbacks and the front setback. While the decks require setback relief, they're in effect replacing an existing shed, which is situated more or less right on the rear property line in a non-conforming manner as well. The decks are elevated, but they're open-walled, as compared to a shed, which is a solid structure. We are increasing the landscaped area on-site as well, and we're providing an improved drainage situation from what exists today. Runoff from the existing roof goes to the neighbors, while we're taking all the new roof runoff, and we're going to discharge it towards the right-of-way, which is an improvement. The proposed development would not cause substantial detriment to the public good, nor substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. And as you consider the negative criteria, I always like to highlight the word "substantial." You're not looking to see if approving this application would cause a detriment to the public or an impairment to the zone plan. You're looking to see if it would cause a substantial detriment or a substantial impairment. I do not believe this application rises to the level of substantial in either case. So on balance, it's my opinion that the benefits of this application substantially outweigh its detriments, giving the board the ability to approve this application with confidence. That's all I have for direct. Mr. McGowan? Happy to answer questions.
Mr. Wan?
So I know the board is quite familiar with other applications that have been in front of the board, especially in Lawrence Harbor area, and the lot sizes that have been a challenge. So most of the properties that are being redeveloped in the harbor do require a D4 or a floor area ratio variance because of the size of the lot. So I'm sure the board gets it. I understand it. My only concern is the deck being so close to the rear yard. And I, I have seen other homes that are designed with a deck, but none of them that the board have approved had like half a feet of setback. And that really concerns me, although the, the adjacent property to the rear is a commercial property. In fact, that gives me even more reasons why would you want the deck so close, right, in terms of safety, security. I would, I would really recommend that that deck be redesigned, or at least pushed back, you compromise on the depth of it, because it seems to be an overkill. I do understand the building having the front setback, because in, in the harbor area, most of the properties struggle with lack of parking spaces. And we have discussed at length applications that have come in and have no parking. And so I think it's, it's a plus point with this project that you're providing on-site parking. So I, I understand the constraints. I do agree with you that it's, it's, it's a hardship because of the size of the lot. But it's, it's really difficult for me to fathom the thought that your rear yard, you actually don't have a rear yard. And that concerns me, because there is a reason why municipal land use law requires you to have those yard spaces, right, for proper light and ventilation. But when your, when your deck, although it's open, you're extending it, and it's not just one-level deck. It goes up, you have a balcony-like extension on the top floor as well. That, that is something that concerns me significantly. And, you know, I would ask the board how they feel about it, but I've worked with the board enough to know their concerns with homes. We have been lenient with homes that get redeveloped in the harbor area. It is one of the things on my to-do list that I have to change the ordinance or change the bulk requirements for our five-zone within the harbor area, because the land use pattern is such that most of those homes are 2,500-square-feet, less than the 5,000. So having said that, I think the deck is more of a concern to me than the house, the size of the house.
Thank you, Mr. Wan. What's the width of the deck?
The, well, yeah, so the-
Proposed.
The, we'll call it the master deck, although at the top is 10 by 10, 10-wide, Mr. Chair. And then the deck on, coming off the first living floor is 13 feet 2 inches wide, and then there's four, another four feet for the landing for the top of the stairs. So it, it's, the ground floor, the first-floor deck is the width of the home, 17 feet.
13 by 17, 13, 2 by 17?
Uh, 10 by 17.
Well, four feet of it is to accommodate the stairs.
Yeah.
You said the upper's 10 by 10, right?
Yes.
And then you said the lower is?
It's 10 by 13 with the four-foot landing, so that gets you to 17.
The box area of the deck is 10 by 13, right?
Yeah, yes.
And then you have a four-foot extension, which is where the landing for the stairs is. That's, that's the pad.
Can we, can you shorten, can you shorten the, the 13 to 10? So it would be 10 by, 10 by 10, even though you, you have the-
As I understand, Venus, you have to pull the deck away from the rear yard. So it's the 10-foot measurement that's the issue.
Yeah.
13 feet is the width of the usable area of the deck. Then there's four foot of a landing.
Gotcha. So it already is at 10.
So it's already attached. Yes, that's correct.
You can see that line right there is the, the limit. The line that kind of splits it in half is the upper deck.
Maureen, can we put the floor-
Do you have a spiral staircase?
As, as currently proposed, it's your conventional, you know, timber-framed stair. You know, I would defer to Mr. McGowan and the applicant. A spiral would certainly be more-
Yeah, it would be-
Economical in space.
Correct.
Efficient.
Is that an ADA issue?
Uh, no, no, because it's just stairs. The stairs already present, yeah.
Okay.
And I don't think it would be an issue from any, I speculate from the building code.
I mean, I'm just thinking in terms of saving the rear yard, a spiral staircase would take lesser space than a traditional staircase. It was just a thought.
I just asked the owner, the applicant. They'd be fine with a spiral staircase.
And that would save what?
So what that would look like is, on this plan, the middle, the middle level here, you see how the stair comes off?
Right.
We could put the spiral right against that back corner of the house, so it would, it would now truly bring it to 10 by 13 of deck. It, it limits the bulk.
So what? Word members? We understand that?
So would you, if you were to have a spiral staircase, are you moving back and effectively the deck from the rear, rear line?
No. The footprint of the deck would remain the same. What changes is actually technically the, the deck setback, which we have .45 feet, which was to the staircase, would now be 3.2, now to the, to the deck itself.
Have you, have you actually looked at the area to see other homes that were built with a front parking space, and how have the rear yard setbacks been? Because I remember on Shoreland Circle towards the beach side, there was a home, and I'm sure the board remembers, because there was a lot of back and forth at the meeting. I think it was called Louis Grossvinner or something like that. That was the name of the application. But they too had proposed a deck on the rear side. However, I believe there was more distance between the deck and the rear property line, similar lot sizes. So have you done any study to see if there are other homes in the neighborhood that have setbacks? Like just, just for consistency?
We, we looked at this whole neck of the woods north of 35, and we identified the four properties, which we showed you. As you go further west, there is one that faces the water, right across the street from the water. That actually is a, it's on a 25-foot-wide lot, and it's very similar in terms of scaling, right? It's very, looks narrow, and it goes up three floors. I think it's like a, it's a stucco facade. It, they have a garage at the front, and they have, actually, their decks are in the front. So, because of course, they're right across from the water, it makes more sense. One of the other ones on that aerial image that we showed was, right around the corner from us, a true three-story home. It's a, has the benefit of a corner lot, so the garage and the parking is actually on what I would call the side street. And again, they also have the decks on the front facing the water, which is, makes the most sense. So to answer that, we did look at it. Any of the other homes that have rear decks that are kind of similar to this, they're on a different-sized lot. So like, what this lot forces us to have is a 17-foot, like, we're pushing ourselves further to the rear.
No, what I meant is not other homes that have deck in the rear yard, just a study of what is the rear yard setback pattern within that block or within that area. Have you noticed buildings that are closer to the rear yard than this house? So that you could get an idea as to where your deck should be lived.
No, we, you know, again, it's, and it's a very wide variety of homes there, as you probably know. No, there's nothing that, we found any sort of trend, or whether this would be the worst case, the not worst case, or anything like that. We didn't, we were more, quite frankly, we were looking at really the, the shape and size of the house in terms of the stories, to see if this won't stick out that way.
One of the other limitations that this lot suffers from is it's only 90 feet deep. So it's not only, only 25 feet wide, it's also 10 feet shorter than probably most of the lots in the area. So that's another problem.
Right, right. Yeah, and again, like, you know, that, I think the, this particular lot, with our neighbor behind us being the, the backside of the commercial strip, we have approximately 10 feet to the building that's behind us. There's an alleyway back there. It's, it's clear. There's a fence across the back property line that's six feet tall. So, you know, I don't think we're necessarily crowding our neighbor to the rear. And again, that's just because this particular lot. If we were internal and had a residence behind us, I think we'd be a little more offensive with, you know, potentially a sensitive receptor.
Is there drive oil behind the concrete building? The-
No, it's, it's just-
It goes right up to the fence, right?
It's just a walkway, and there's this drainage pipe back there.
I mean, I would be more comfortable to have at least a five-feet setback from the rear property line, and, which means your deck would be then reduced to 10 feet by eight feet. The depth would be eight, and you still get the five feet, and-
Eight width, 10 length. How does that?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Wan opined maybe that it would be 8 by 10.
Eight, so-
Eight give enough?
Eight.
Draw the deck back.
Which, which dimension comes off the back?
The width.
Move the deck further away from the back property.
So that you get five feet, yes.
The applicant owner indicates they would certainly-
If you want a minute to, you know, I know he's, I'm not, no, I understand. If you want a minute to confer with him before you put something on the record, I'm good. If you just want to step away, but.
I'm satisfied that he's indicated that he's-
Mr. McGowan, I take your word. Okay, yep. Anything further?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair, unless there's any more questions.
All right, let's see if the board has any questions, okay? I'll start on my left. Of the engineer, please. Any questions? No? Coming up the line? No, no? Go ahead. Mr. Rizzo.
If it's 10 by 8 on the bottom, what are we going to make the top?
I think you'd make them both the same.
Same.
All right. So now she lost on the top.
Because they would both affect the setback.
Eight by 10, you could still have a couple chairs and a table. Could dine out there.
Yes.
I think, I think that's, it's still acceptable. I think when you go below eight feet, you lose that functionality, so.
Good. Nice chair.
My question is, why do you need the third-story balcony at all? That leads out of the bedroom. You're looking over the neighbor's property. You're giving them no privacy. They're at 33 feet. These other houses that are like right next to them are all low flat. They have no privacy into their backyard. If you eliminate the second balcony, or deck, whatever you want to call it, and just use the one that's real, you're calling the first level, which is really the second level, I think it'd be more reasonable for the neighbors.
Ms. Chevler, if we were to put a, you know, fencing along the two sides of the third-floor deck, would that satisfy your concerns about neighborhood privacy?
No.
Because now they can only see the, the strip mall behind them. They really, unless they reach out, they can't see their neighbor.
But you have two houses on either side that are, are much lower.
Right.
And so you're just going to put that, these sides up. It's going to look ridiculous. I don't think it's really necessary to have a second deck.
I will say, we've had a previous application, and then another one you're talking about on a corner, on a corner lot, and we asked for that for that, a privacy fence.
Yes.
Does that overlook the windows of the house across the street?
Sure.
That's the one I'm speaking of, right?
Yes.
We're both talking about that.
There were, there were, there was another application too, a couple of years ago. Grossvener was more recent, but there was another application we did on Bay Shore, and that we had put in privacy fence too, on the sides.
I, personally, I think they're, they're nice for everybody. It's nice for the people sitting there, and it's nice for the people who don't want to see, so. But that's, that's just a suggestion that you might want to-
But I understand the privacy concerns, and that's why I suggest that maybe if we put up a privacy fence on each side of the deck, that should certainly go a long way to address it.
We'll see. Any other questions on my right now?
No, I have nothing.
No? Okay. Mr. Dasty, anything? You have another witness?
That's it. He's my, he's my planner.
Okay. I saw some things in here about, on the plans was not, there was a discrepancy? Could we just-
I think he has testified, and we can go with the testimony, so that it clears the discrepancies.
Can we do that?
Yes.
On page, page four or five. If we start on the planning comments, could we-
Yeah.
Get in line?
Absolutely. So there was a discrepancy with existing and proposed floor area ratios. So just to be very clear, the existing floor area ratio, we calculate as .35, and the proposed floor area ratio is .86. And a couple of these comments, A, B, and C, really keep going back to the discrepancy and just making sure the record is straight. So I think that, that covers it.
Mr. Wan?
Yes.
Okay. D and E?
You said the proposed floor area is .86.
.86, yes. D is similar. It's, again, it's just tying back to what exactly numbers went into. So, so the calculated, excuse me, calculated floor area, 1950.48 is correct. So that would apply to, that would get you to the .86 floor area ratio. So D is really more informative. We agree with that.
And we note that the floor area ratio that's greater than most in the surrounding areas because it's a 25-foot lot.
Correct. And that's, that's comment E, Mr. McGowan. Yeah, so we, there is a commentary about the neighborhood from Mr. Wan, and we also provided our own neighborhood assessment, slightly different. And then I think the only other was engineering comments. We're happy to show utilities, they're going to be existing. And then the collection system, I mentioned, we're going to adjust to make sure everything goes to the right-of-way, and no other issues with dimensioning and COFIs and all that, so.
Good?
Yes.
That you're satisfied then?
So am I.
As long as you're satisfied?
Thank you.
All right. You're not going to have any more witnesses, right? You can look for a vote?
Yep.
I'm going to go to public.
Sure.
Matter 24-2024Z, Theodore Cot, Block 10, Lot 300. Physical location is 300 Shoreland Circle in Lawrence Harbor for three-story residents. If anyone wishes to be heard on this matter, please raise your hand or stand. This will be the last opportunity if you want to have any comment on this particular application. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Final comments, sir?
I think the, Mr. Ward has made the presentation to just- I, I think the, Mr. Ward has made the presentation to justify the variances that we're seeking. He's noted that while we, we continue to have variances, the, the size of a lot forces variances if you're going to have a livable residence on the site. But in doing so, we have now provided two parking spaces where none existed before. We've improved the streetscape. We're going to redirect drainage out to the street instead of to the neighboring properties. We're going to increase the green space and landscaping and we're going to hopefully build a very attractive home based on the architectural renderings. So, we would appreciate it if the board would consider that and give us a favorable approval.
Ms. Andrews wanted to make a comment. I'm going to let her.
Sure.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I heard about the privacy fence, but I didn't hear if it's going to be a privacy-
We agreed to include privacy fencing on the third-floor balcony.
And it's going to be eight by ten?
And the two balconies will be eight by ten in usable space. And then we're going to have a spiral staircase coming up to that first balcony.
Mr. Testaverde, okay? Anybody on my left side before? Okay. This is a classic example of how a, a small little area with bungalows back in the fifties and sixties, that people have turned them over and gentrified that, that area. And it really has come along. Certainly, I've seen you here before and you've seen me and a lot of these have come forward and they're, they're really, really impressive homes. I understand the, the problem, you know, and we all do. Those lots weren't carved for, for this type of living, but they really weren't carved for living full-time. They were weekend retreats or maybe a week at a time. So, that area has come a long way and I think that's, kudos to those who have undertaken this. I know it's a costly venture and those that have tried to do this to their homes or, or create homes for other people, it's, it's a, it's a blessing to the township. It, it really improves the, the whole look of, of the Bay Shore. So, I, I think your plan sounds good. I'm glad you agreed to shorten the deck. The town's issues have been apparently satisfied. I don't know about the board, sir. You know that. I can only vote for myself and not for the board. I believe you have met the burden of proof. I think that I'm going to need the attorney to make sure we clarify the C1s and C2s. Because did you, were you saying all the C1s you originally spoke about are going to, we're going to house it as a flex C2?
Yeah, I would say-
And I'll see if Mr. Dasty agrees, but-
That's fine.
Yeah, the lot area and width would be C1s and the remainder would be C2s.
That's okay, sir?
Yes.
All right. So, we, we, we have to get by a D, a D4 and then the, we'll see if that survives and we'll, we'll move on to the-
Thank you, yes.
All right. So, you will call for a vote, correct, sir?
Please, yes.
All right. Board, absent any last comments, I'm going to ask someone to either move for a D4 for a denial or an approval and we'll move on from there, should that survive. None? All right, um, oh.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
Yes, I, I, yes on D4.
You would say yes to approve a G4. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Second, Mr. Izzo. Roll call, please, to D4.
Mrs. An, Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scagno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
For all the reasons I said, absolutely. And it's a, it's a great thing that they're doing. So, it's yes to that. Well, let's go to the bulks. It's all going to be C2. Could we put them all together, Mr. Dasty, as one? Do you agree?
Yes, that's-
Counselor?
Certain.
Okay, will all, all the Cs together as a C2? Someone move them?
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Andrews, second.
Roll call, please, as to the Cs. The bulks, I should say.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scagno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
This is one more good zoning and, and good planning issues that, and it's, it looks like a beautiful building. Those, I was very impressed with the houses that you, you showed on the slides and I hope yours comes out just the same. Obviously, my vote is yes.
Thank you.
You know, we'll be, there'll be a resolution at the next meeting.
Sure. I just want to make one other comment. I, I haven't been here in a little while, but when I sat down on that side of the room this evening, I noticed that there's a chair dedicated to Ed Miller.
Yeah.
I thought that was pretty good.
And I know you've been, you've spent a lot of time in, in this room. Mr. McGowan, thank-
Remember her dearly.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Ward. Thank you as well. Good luck to the owner.
Good seeing you, Bob.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, Bob. Take care.
Take care, Chuck. Good to see you.
All right, board, we, anybody want to take a quick break? Just a couple minutes? Yeah, okay. Tell you what, we're at a recess, no more than five minutes.
Marine voted yes.
Thank you.
All right, we've returned from recess. We're back on the record. We have one final matter to handle this evening. Before I call that in, please, Ms. Porcelli, could we have a roll call?
Certainly. Mrs. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scagno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Yeah.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yeah.
Chairman Sullivan?
I'm here as well. Counselor's here. Forty-three dash twenty-two-four Clayton DeWolf. This is Zone R20, Low-Medium Density Residential. It's block two-five-one-oh, lot one-seven. The physical location, here's twenty-eight Eisenhower Drive in Old Bridge for a home addition. It's going to require C and D variance. Applicant proposes in addition to an existing single-family home. Sir, you are?
Clayton DeWolf.
Two things I want, I want to advise you of. One, you are, by the regulations of the board required when you're seeking a used variance, which is a D variance, to have a transcription of the record. You can waive that, as you probably heard me say to the attorney before, because if you need to go elsewhere with this matter, you'd have to have a transcript. So, you could possibly get that from YouTube or perhaps from Channel fifteen. I don't know that. But you wouldn't have a stenographer with a record. So, that's up to you.
Understood.
Second of all, I'll advise you, sir, that this is a D variance. Now, there's certain proofs that have to be put on the record. You're without counsel, I assume, and you're going to have probably no other witnesses?
Correct.
Okay. So, I would warn you that when you have a D variance and you present it to the board, the board does not approve it, you cannot bring back the same application.
Understood.
You understand that, sir?
Understood.
All right. Did, uh, is there anything else I need to advise?
All right, board attorney will swear you in.
Why don't you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the whole tree is self-destructive?
I do.
Is your full name? Say your last.
Clayton Thomas D E W O L F E.
Capital W.
Yes.
You can move that, slide it a little bit towards you, sir. That's perfect. All right, we, the board has the basic application that you, you want to add in addition to your home. What I'm going to ask you to do is tell us what you're going to do, how you're going to do it, why you're going to do it, and we'll move on from there. You may have some questions from us. We probably have questions of you. The professional from the town might speak on this matter, obviously. And then I have to open up a public portion. Hopefully, the woman that you were sitting next to wouldn't be speaking opposed to it. No. Because she's the only one in the courtroom this, this evening for the public, so. But we'll still call one. You can proceed at your own pace.
Okay. Like I said, my name's Clayton DeWolf. I'm a lifelong resident of Old Bridge along with my wife. I have a local business in Old Bridge, Trademark Plumbing. Just looking to add a fourth bedroom to our house. It's a little undersized for, you know, what we need. It's a three-bedroom house now. We're looking to add a fourth bedroom, a little bit larger laundry room and a bathroom.
Fourth and a laundry room, you said?
Yes.
Mudroom, like?
Yes.
Other than the exhibits you've sent, do you have any, anything that you want to show the board in the way of pictures, sketches?
No.
None? Okay. There's certain proofs that you're going to have to put on the record here. Why do you think this is appropriate? Is it, does it fit in with the zone plan? I can ask Mr. Dasty to try and elicit some of the, those questions, but you have to put them on the record because the board can't vote on no record.
Understood.
So, that's why I say sometimes it's better to have advice on, on these matters. But what, I would like you to tell me a lot more than, than that. Obviously, there's a reason you're, it's probably a floor area ratio, I'm assuming?
Yeah. So, you know, the setbacks on the house, we're original owners of the house. We bought it new twenty-five years ago. The setbacks were changed, you know, a number of years ago, three or four years ago. The, the floor area, the footprint of the house is basically only going to be increased by about a hundred and, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy square feet. The rest is going to be up over the existing structure that's there.
I noticed on the sketch, you actually go outside the-
We're slightly-
The footprint of the home, right?
We're slightly outside the building envelope, yes, correct.
And what does that accomplish?
Uh, it just allows us to have larger space up above. In order to put the fourth bedroom, we need to step outside the building envelope a couple of feet.
Okay. Just tell the board what's behind your house.
It's all woods. It's owned by Old Bridge Water Department. It's about three hundred acres.
No homes?
No homes. We have one neighbor to the right. There's a drainage detention basin to the left with no neighbor.
Let me sit, I'll give you time to breathe. We're going to go to Mr. Swant.
Do you know how many bedrooms does majority of the homes in the neighborhood have?
All the houses in the neighborhood have four bedrooms.
Because what I'm noticing is when I did an analysis of the sizes of the homes and the FARs that they have, your house is one of the larger homes to begin with. Though, there is another house that is across the street from you that has the same FAR as yours, but the, most of the houses are much smaller in FAR.
Well, that's incorrect because I have the original brochure from when my house was built. It was twenty-three hundred square feet. We have a kitchen addition that is a hundred and seventy square feet and our proposed is six hundred and fifty-six. When things were submitted to the township, what they did was they doubled the number of the proposed and when we presented that to them, they said it was too late to change it.
So, what is the FAR that you're asking for?
Um, we're looking to add four hundred and fifty-six square feet.
Four hundred?
To the existing twenty-three forty-five and one-seventy, which gives you thirty-one seventy-one.
Twenty-three forty-five?
Twenty-three forty-five is the original structure. We have a kitchen addition that's a hundred and seventy onto the original and we're proposing the six hundred and fifty-six. When they added everything up, they dou, someone made a mistake and doubled the number of the proposed.
No, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Two thousand three hundred and forty-five was the original.
Correct.
You did a kitchen addition for one-seventy square feet.
Correct.
And now you're asking for another addition of four hundred and fifty-six?
Six fifty-six.
Six fifty-six.
Six fifty-six.
On, on the proposed, it, it states that the house would be thirty-eight hundred square feet and it would not. It would be thirty-one hundred and seventy-one square feet, which is, yes, larger than some of the other houses in the area, but only by about maybe two hundred, two hundred square feet. I have a copy of the original square footage of all the houses that are in the community. The large, the largest house stock from the builder was twenty-nine hundred and twenty-four square feet. So, this is only about a hundred fifty, two hundred square feet larger than the, the original structures.
So, so, board members, with the two thousand three hundred and forty-five original, one-seventy for the kitchen and six hundred and fifty-six, that brings you to three thousand one hundred and seventy-one. The lot is fourteen thousand two hundred and sixteen, which translates into point two-two. So, the floor area they're asking for is point two-two and not point two-seven. That's what the applicant is saying.
Correct.
And which means-
Then it's what now?
Yeah, that's what I'm calculating.
Minus out the-
Two, three, four, five.
Seven. Seven.
Plus 170, divided by 1,4216. That is .177.
Basically, 188, 22.
If the proposed FAR is .22, then if you look at the exhibit on page four, there are other homes that are around that range. So I see that lot six across the street is .22. The one on Regan, there's one, all four lots on Regan, that's .26, .23, .25, .28 is the Regan, sorry. Just to put it in a perspective.
The other ones on his street, on his side were all, all smaller.
They are all smaller. The only one that is, uh, the same size as this one is Lot Six, which is across the street.
That, that's incorrect, because Lot, Lot Five is a, is a 2,924 square foot house existing.
I have it as .18 from the tax records.
Okay. Well.
Do I understand correctly, then you're sending the, the FAR, which?
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. The FAR now for Mr. Wolf's house is 0.1177.
Mm-hmm.
Proposal is to 0.22.
Right.
And there's only Lot Six, which would be a somewhat similar FAR.
Yes. Yes. If the numbers that, uh, are being provided by the applicant are accurate, um, then, uh, yes, the proposed FAR is .22. The existing is .177.
Yeah. Do we have the actual measurements, and did you submit that other than the survey?
Everything was submitted.
Do you have architecturals? Or, do you have architecturals?
Yeah. Architectural plans?
Yep.
Okay. You haven't been sworn, so I can't, I can't let you speak. If you'd like to be sworn, we'll let you sit down and you can.
I'm the one who did everything.
Hold on.
Mrs. Wolf, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, self-indulgent?
Yes.
Give us your full name, please.
You're ready, it's good.
Oh. Denise DeWolf.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I sent in the big copies, eight of them, certified and sealed, of the architectural drawings. You should all have them.
We don't have them.
I don't know why.
I can submit you with eight right now if you would like.
This is surveys.
Yeah.
I have, I have small copies. I don't have the large ones.
Anything that comes through has to be already approved.
Right.
It was. Everything.
We don't have them, is what I'm saying.
They, if, our, my office doesn't have it, too.
Did you send them in when you sent them?
Absolutely. I gave it to Emily in the office. Maureen, Emily, I've been working with them day in and day out. I submitted them a, a week before the 10 days. Everybody had them.
Do we know who Emily is?
Emily's already, we talked to her.
Um, chairman, I have a recommendation, because I've not seen it either, so.
Is there, uh, signatures on them? You just, you have no, I didn't sign any plans, so.
Can.
Secretary.
I haven't seen it. I have a copy of the completeness review here, the email that they sent, and telling us. I have small copies. I don't have the large ones.
Hold on, we'll get there. Well, I understand that, but they have to go through, through, the planner has never seen these, so would have, for whatever reason, I don't know. So the only thing we can do is we can ask, we can put you right back on the next meeting. I want you to contact Ms. Sawant personally in her office. The board will get copies of that, and we'll be able to see it, and she'll be able to see it, because she has to see it before we see it.
I understand.
But we don't have them, so we can't, you know, that's why we're asking, when I asked you, do you have anything other than what was submitted? We have a, we have a survey.
We submitted all that months ago. I'm, like.
Eight signings.
Here's what I'm looking at, your survey, and that's all I have.
So, and, and.
It's on the website. I know it's on your, I've seen it there, on your, I've seen it.
Well, here we are. Our next meeting is in two weeks.
It's only in two weeks. You don't have to send a notice out, because we'll announce it at this meeting that it's carried to the next meeting, and, uh, that gives me chance to review it, and we can conclude at that meeting.
Okay.
Okay. How about, um, everything else? I don't wanna.
Maureen, doesn't matter. I have not seen it.
Oh, you have?
No.
Are you missing anything else? Like the 200-foot list? Like everything that's?
No, you don't need to. Everything else is fine. I just need to look at the architectural to confirm.
Sure.
That the testimony your husband has provided is accurate for numbers.
Okay.
Because the board wants to ensure that your proposed home is not gonna be out of character or larger than other homes. So it's important for me to look at the architecturals, and what the board can do is just carry it to the next meeting, so that, that, the next meeting is in two weeks. You go first. You don't have to send notices. You don't have to do anything. Just come to my office with the architectural, so that I have a copy.
That's fine.
Okay.
They're not on, on the website, because I have that in front of me as well. So I don't know why, and I'm, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody.
Yeah.
But if you want the board to make a decision.
Sure.
We have to see that, so.
Sure.
All right? So, uh, if, there's really no need to, for any testimony tonight.
Okay.
I'm sorry that if.
That's fine. It's fine.
Got mixed up.
It's not a, it's not a problem.
I don't know, but this board certainly didn't receive it.
That's fine. We had it.
All right. Well, I thank you both for coming in. This matter will be heard at the very next meeting, which is the?
March 20th.
March 20th. Okay? I'm gonna try and get you on right away.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you both for coming.
Have a good evening.
Two weeks.
All right, matter, uh, 43 dash 2024, for those maybe watching at home, is 28 Eisenhower Drive. That matter's gonna be continued at our very next meeting, March 20th. There'll be no further notification. Board, that brings us to our, the end of our meeting. There is no one here in the public to speak tonight, so I will skip the general public comments. Ms. Sawant, anything you want to advise the board on?
Um, no, not, not that I can think of. You should be receiving the annual zoning report shortly, um, and, uh, we'll have it for the next meeting. It's ready, but I didn't get a chance to review it still, so you'll have.
Mr. Dusty, you have anything for us at this point? All right. Thank you. Board members, anything you want to bring up? I'll call for an adjournment. Someone want to move it?
I don't think it's.
It will be St. Patrick's Day, yes, on the 17th.
Oh, that's right.
Behave. Uh, someone, I'm moving for an adjournment. Someone, someone make the motion, please?
I'll move it.
All right. All in favor of, uh, adjournment? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned.